It cost me about $320 in personal property and $320 in county tax. Now, let's say you give them, I don't care how much money you give them, but it's a 15-year project. Let's say it takes them five years to complete that project. And the value of the property is a million dollars after improvements. Lincoln does not get any taxes on the $900,000 difference. Now, I am aware, or I was told, that the school tax is also part of my dollars. Now, I was told the state makes up for that part of the school tax. But it stays at that base. So, the schools lose out on the increase in the property value for 15 years, and the state won't reimburse it because the city's not charging them for our infrastructure. This is a significant amount. Just for the property tax, city and county property tax is approximately $5,760 at the 16% rate. That is now part of the whole budget. And that's really a project that's been given out millions of dollars to TIF. And this is lost dollars for the city on taxes. State reimburses some, but that's still coming out of my pocket. So, I believe there, you know, and not only that, if the state doesn't reimburse school taxes or the part of the city taxes that are given up, that means that all the citizens of Nebraska-
Could you please wrap up your testimony, Mr. Escobar? That's five minutes.
Yeah. Have to wrap up, have to pay for that difference in revenue collected. So, we're supporting other cities, wherever TIF's used, they're supporting us. That's-
Thank you.
Up for testimony is Ms. Jane Kinsey, followed by Mike Eckert, then on deck, Jean Eileen Durgan Clinchard.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs, 6703 Hawkins Bend, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516. Watch Dogs is speaking for budget cuts as proposed by the city council, and we're recommending some other adjustments also. In the mayor's original budget, he wants a tax increase on the back of fee hikes for wastewater, downtown parking, park and rec fees, health department fees, waste hauling fees, water and wastewater fees, the city dividend on the electric bill of citizens. I mean, you know, where does he think that people's money can go except to the city in In addition, we have the highest wheel tax in the U.S., and five counties in Nebraska have no wheel tax. Nebraska is the third-highest state in the taxation bill of the U.S. states for nine types of taxes: real estate, state and local income taxes, vehicle property tax, vehicle sales tax, food and telecom taxes. Property values are up and wages are stagnant. When Lincolnites eat out, they pay an occupation sales tax as well as a rate increase for the city's sales tax, which is as much as the residents of Seattle, Washington pay, and they get more gourmet food than is available here in town. We propose that you remove the $400,000 loan from the general fund that has been made to the arena and shift the cost to the JPA. They have so much money that they can hand out their money for a wood floor and a sculpture on the downtown in front of the arena. There are a lot of frills in this city for which only a few people can enjoy, because it's either out of their income reach or they have no interest in it. And so, we propose that you think about this when you go through and look at the budget and readjusting it. The issue about the emerald ash bor, arborists are in no means in agreement about what to do about that. So, I suggest that you seek information from other places rather than just the people who have made testimony today. One of the gentlemen said that in three to four years, this would be a big problem. Parks and Rec has just given money to the woods tennis courts and has a difficulty losing money on the city golf. This is not used by majority of Lincolnites. So, if they have money that they might readjust to other areas, they might have enough to have some initial expense on the ash bor issue. It's proposed that the Highlands Golf Course be sold, and that seems like a good idea at this time. So, we need the basics: shelter, food, electricity, and water. Beyond that, everything is a frill, even though some people might say transportation is necessary for this, that, and the other. So, I want you to think, as a spokesman for the Watch Dogs of Lincoln government, where to put your priorities with the taxpayers' money, and to consider the fact that a lot of the money that's being spent is not in the interest of most of the citizens of this city. A creative answer to one of the problems was about the ash bor is to ask the public to donate a tree in their yards, and Earl May will plant it for free. We need some creative thinking here, not just dipping into the taxpayer's pocket to maintain city government.
Next is Mike Eckert, then Jean Durgan Clinchard on deck, then would be Rosina Paulini.
Good afternoon, Mike Eckert, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200 here in Lincoln. Today, here on behalf of the Rookby Coalition, which Kent Seacrest mentioned earlier, the Schleich Family, one of our development clients, and Mark Lewis, another one of our development clients, speaking then on behalf of the water and wastewater rate increases. Been up here for several past years, in fact, doing this and continuing to support it for the multiple benefits that it has, and I was so pleased today that Russell Miller came up to testify in support of it also. He's always been a staunch neighborhood advocate, but I think the way that this increase is laid out, that there's water main replacement, there's new water main installation, there's system improvements, new wells, other major items that are needed, as well as us looking long-term out to another source of water 25 years from now in the Missouri River. So, yes, and I don't want to repeat what Kent and Danae said today, but we've got several areas of town where we infilled quite a bit coming out of the recession, and we are busting at the seams, and we have some new areas that we need to open up, and we need sewer and water mains to do that. And so, you know, I think when you look at the big picture with where our rates stand in regards to our peer communities, our communities that are in proximity to us, water is still very affordable here, $45 a month for sewer and water rates, $1.50 a day, not too bad for the most important thing you do before you go to bed and the first thing you do when you get up. And so, you know, when we put it all in perspective, we have to keep up. I wish I could have Nick McElvein come up here, who ran the water department for years, and talk about how difficult it was for him at times when we had those 10 years or so, and we didn't have any increases in that base fee percentage. And what Nick really relied on was dry summers, because that's when people watered their lawns, and that's when he made money. And the city's in this precarious position of having to supply this for health, safety issues, but at the same time, it is a major source of revenue when they sell the water. So, when it would rain or we'd have wet years, Nick would just put his hands on his head and have to figure out, how am I going to pay for a lot of my system improvements, new growth, a new treatment plan at Ashland, things like that. And so, I think, looking at it from a business perspective, the rate study showed that the best way to do that, and where we were way behind and way underfunded, was in the service component of it. And so, I think that's why you're seeing the increase there. I think, as you mentioned earlier, Councilman Fellers, that provides more predictability when we go to bond, it provides a more current income stream that we can forecast, and, you know, we have raised the water rates in order to discourage, you know, overuse of it. And so, we really only have one area left to look at right now, and I think it's that base fee area. And so, water and wastewater are in such better shape compared to roads, and so, it alleviates that whole issue when we get to these new areas generally, between the city and who's going to fund it and who's not. Years ago, we had developers paying for off-site water mains and having to get reimbursed. They've done, Nick did a great job, and his predecessors are doing a great job balancing that. To get back real quickly, Councilman Christensen, on one of your things that you asked in terms of if you were to explain to somebody, how is this, how am I not paying for new growth? Well, since 2004, we've had impact fees, and that's already 12 years now. And the current impact fee on a 3/4-inch water main for water and wastewater is about $2,000 a year. If you project that out over a 30-year basis, 360 months, every new home in Lincoln is writing a check to the city of Lincoln, investing in the water system, and they're paying upfront $5.41 a month. Those homes that were built in 2004, '05, and '06 are also paying all these subsequent rate increases besides that. So, we cannot forget, and the wastewater department has a specific component of that broken down to the system component only, not just the lines, the distribution lines. And the system component is $805, which is $2.23 a month for 30 years. They're paying upfront to the city of Lincoln to help do that. So, I don't think, and that's why I applaud Russell for coming up here, this isn't a core versus fringe thing. This is a community thing, and us having a reliable water source and being able to replace our old mains and fund new mains. So, I'm here today to support that, and so are my clients, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me here. My name is Jean Eileen Durgan Clinchard, and I live at 638 North 25th Street. I'm retired from Lincoln Public Schools. I'm on a fixed income. I have a house, I live in a house that is 106 years old. So, the maintenance issues are very important, and it's one of the things that is crucial to an old house, and I've lived there 30 years, is that you do things preventatively, you do it so that you, and you pay accordingly. I'm replacing windows, I'm doing this, that, and the other thing. But I, and I pay for that because I know that it's needed and it's going to save me in the long run. So, the things that I'm hearing today, and I came particularly because I wanted to just say, "Budget looks great, go for it, you've really worked hard on it. I know that there are some places that you're wanting to slice," and I'm thinking, "Don't do that. Don't get carried away by that." And think about Startran. When I first bought my house, I was thinking, "Okay, I'm going to age in that house. I want to be close to a bus line." So, one of my criteria in looking for a new home was that it was going to be close to a bus line. Didn't know that they didn't run on Sundays, and I didn't know that they didn't run after 7 o'clock. However, I'm older, so that doesn't make too much difference. So, the bus, the bus system, Startran, is really, really important. I was struck by, I forget, I think it was Mr. Seacrest who talked about seed corn and the other thing to do with diversity and infrastructure. This is what infrastructure, how can I say, "Well, I prefer public safety and police protection over water?" You know, how do you make those choices? You people are dealing with that kind of balance, but it looks to me as though what has been looked at today and what you have in this budget proposed to you is excellent. It's, I mean, I'd like maybe you to put some more in some places. There are some places I'm going to have to not do, that other window that needs to be replaced maybe for another year or two. But if you're going to pay attention to my 100-plus-year-old sewer out in the street before it breaks down for me, I'm going to really appreciate that. So, public safety, Lincoln Public Schools ash bor, we should have paid attention to diversity in the first place, you know? It's just, we didn't, and so now I hope we have learned. For one of the, one of the things that one of the gentlemen said to do with the ash bor, the characteristic of the disease is that the tree gets, is no longer able to process the water, and so it gets dry. So, you've got this big thing up there with heavy branches. Lease little thing is going, and whose roof goes, whose car goes, who pays for that if it's on city property? You know, if it's my property, I have to take care of it, but if it's city's, there we are. So, I really, really urge you to support this budget as it is, and remember that it is, so yes, I'm going to be paying a little bit more. I'm going to be paying the 15% or 5%, whatever it is, but I see these little fees chop up in all kinds of places, and I think, "Oh gee, what's that for? What's that for?" And if it, this, this, this. But I'm paying for something, and I know what I'm paying for when I see what comes. So, please, please, support the budget as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next testifier.
Next testifier is Rosina Paulini. Afterwards, Mike Rankin, and on deck then would be June Peterson.
Good afternoon, folks. Thanks to you all for your service and your commitment and obviously steadfastness, because this is a long day for you. And thank you all, all these folks behind us that are so passionate that they come from work and they, they're engaged, and this is their city. So, that's, that's pretty amazing. Today, I'm painting a rather broad swath. We all bleed red. We all have or need social services at one point or another in our lives. Public transportation and home services, I'm not there yet, for the elderly, libraries, parks and trails, community recreation centers, and they all need to be accessible and available to all of us, whether we choose to use them or not. Since the '90s, and, you know, I've, we've watched aging partners take the hit, we've watched Startran take the hit, we've watched Parks and Recs really take some hits. Libraries have been cut, they've all been cut to the bone, right? So, any further cuts are really amputations. I mean, now we're starting to take the head off of Parks and Recs, the roots out of our tree city, which is what we're known for by not funding ash bor to the maximum availability. We are taking the heart out of aging partners, because that is our in-home services. I live, oh, I live at 1850 Dakota Street. We have an ash that was planted by a seven-year-old sometime in the '40s. It's really big, and the person that said, "What's it going to hit?" I'm hoping it's not me, but about $1,500 was the last estimate I had for taking that ash bor down, or for taking that ash tree down. And, I mean, and that's, that's a responsibility I realize that I have, and it will probably come down in the next couple of years here, next year, just choosing the next tree. You, another area is snow removal. Snow removal, I truly believe, is a part of the street fund, in the same way that snow removal prevents potholes, car fixings, like axle rods, and, you know, the really cheap stuff, and, and lives to some degree, because if we let the ice, and we know that we can get some major ice if the snow isn't removed at two to four inches, then that's increased accidents, it's increased cost in police officers, it's increased health costs. I mean, everything kind of gets associated. So, when we take that from the general fund, then we're further cutting our social services, which are already cut to the bone. So, I really feel that snow removal needs to come out of the street fund. That is a part of streets. Love solutions. So, our city's really not growing that much in population, right? The numbers really haven't risen. We're a fairly low-density city when you really think about it, 280,000, and it really hasn't gone up. But where we grow is square acreage, and I personally call it urban sprawl. It's not efficient, when you think about it. Low density comes along with a responsibility to taxpayers, whether it's increased water services, all of the things we've got to pay for, for low density and continued development. We could inform our population about what are the pots of money that really go into anything here, because it's a bit of grant money, it's a bit of this money, it's a bit of tax money, and if the public were more aware of how that's actually paid for, maybe, that would help the budget in the future. I really like the idea of mandating a maintenance endowment with any park, bridge, trail, school for maintenance, because it's really easy to build, but we really don't have the funds. We're starting to get endowments for maintenance, but to have that endowment for maintenance so we can really secure the future of that park, school, or whatever, and forgive me if I may, and if this is out of turn, please say so-
Please just wrap it up.
Recycling ordinance, it's a lot like the couch ordinance, right? We have an ordinance, the landlord is actually responsible for the tenant who has the couch on the front porch, and any really wise landowner or landlord would say, "Guess what? It's in your lease. You can't have a couch on your porch."
If you want to send comments about recycling to the council via email-
Oh, sorry.
No, that's just, it's not before us right now, so we're trying to keep this to the budget item that's before us.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. One up, Mr. Rankin.
I'm Mike Rankin, I live at 2715 Dox Drive. I also happen to be the chief executive officer of Neighbor Works Lincoln, just for full disclosure. I think City of Lincoln is a great place to live and has certainly earned a tag as a star first-class city. This has happened as an accomplishment through the efforts of many people over many years and many councils, and I hope we continue to move forward in that direction. The city, along with its citizens, has been doing a good job of keeping our city great, and for that, I'm very thankful. Enhancements have been made to the neighborhoods surrounding our city core, and I'm excited to see that happen. I think there's much more that needs to be done, and I'm concerned that we continue to look at that as an important effort for our city to be as outstanding as I think it's possible to be. Today, I'm concerned with information that I've received in regards to proposed amendments to the council that would impact the budgets of the Department of Urban Development and the Planning Commission, or the Planning Department, excuse me. These departments are imperative to continue to enhance the core neighborhoods of our city, which I believe is what's going to be needed to make Lincoln even greater. As a result of our involvement with these two departments, I understand that their staff is very, very busy, and they, I think they are carrying a full load. I am really concerned if we start cutting hours to staff members in those two departments, or if we cut a complete staff member out of those departments, that we're going to have the ability to at least stand still with further improvement to those core neighborhoods, and maybe to go backwards. I don't think they have the time and the staff to do that. Having worked with them, we understand the level of involvement. I believe they are filling the role as well as I can. I also think they are extremely busy, and it's an important thing for us to have those two departments working to make Lincoln better. I really would encourage you to look at maintaining those departments at the level of the original budget, so that we can continue to see the enhancements in the core neighborhoods of the City of Lincoln and further enhancements in the City of Lincoln. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Rankin.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm June Peterson. Address is 4501 Dryden Street here in Lincoln, and the zip is 16. And it's good to see all of you. Thank you. I'm also a neighbor to Jane Kinsey, and I bring you an entirely different message. I took the Taking Charge survey when it was up on the city website, and I answered all the questions and expressed my hope that no cuts would be made, and that if it was necessary, an increase in taxes would be made. And I was delighted to see that that did happen, and the tax increase was minimal. Our home would have an increase of $22.38 for the coming year if this tax were implemented, a bargain, I think, for what I would get for that $22. I'm pleased that there will be more police officers and firefighter, paramedics, and that there will be more money in their pension plan. Deteriorating infrastructure is an issue throughout the country, and I was pleased to see that this was addressed in the budget, including replacing water mains. I've seen that map before you saw it today, and it worries everyone. I am willing to pay more for water service so that the city can address this infrastructure need. The mayor's budget preserved services I care about: in-home services for seniors, neighborhood pools, preserved library hours, more Startran bus drivers, and neighborhood snow removal. I understood the need for fees and rate increases, and believe the benefits for all of us were worth that price. I was pleased until I saw the cuts that were proposed by the council. We did not coordinate this. I don't understand either your denial of the request by the Planning Department and the Urban Development Department to add a staff member. These small departments are crucial to a growing city, and like all departments, have been doing more with less for years. I was especially disappointed to see the proposed $150,000 reduction for the document management software. It was a frustration for all directors during my years of service that there was no line item for technology. My department relied on small amounts of unspent funds, which were generally late-arriving federal funds that were found at the end of a budget year. We used those to upgrade and replace essential computer hardware and software, and there was never enough. The work done by building and safety, public works, and planning relies on management of hundreds of thousands of bits of information. It's simply good management and good public service to handle this information in the most efficient and technologically savvy ways. Voters supported the need to provide an updated communication system for our police and fire departments, and new fire stations where they are desperately needed. Using that Pulse Point app on my phone, I counted LFR responses for the last 23 hours. There were two public service calls, probably on Sunday, five fire calls, and 61 medical emergency calls in 23 hours. I don't understand how you could cut $300,000 for ambulances out of that section of the budget. For years, departments have cut and managed with less. Taxes were increased only once during the entire 13 years that I served as a director. that I served as a director. This is the second in 14 years, and it's modest. It's a responsible step to take, and I would ask you to reconsider your proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next testifiers.
I have Deb Andrews and Pat Anderson.
Thank you. I'm Deb Andrews, 1235 A Street. I support the proposed budget with the cuts and no tax increase. City governance has strayed from its constitutional function. I, the taxpayer, loaned the Pinnacle Bank Arena $500,000 in 2014. The PBA failed to pay me back as promised by the due date of May 31st. I will likely be contributing $1 to $2 million in tax increment financing to Nelnet and Speedway for their development in the South Hay Market. I'm expected to contribute $8 to $10 million in TIF for a planned building at 9th and O Street. I sold Huddle Land for its expansion at half the appraised value. I spent $3.2 million on the In Street Bike Way. If I get a $10 parking ticket and don't pay it in a week, the fine increases to $25. If I don't or can't pay that in another week, my vehicle can be towed. The mayor wants to increase my contribution to the city's annual pension fund, bringing it to $7.9 million. A large contingent of those future pension beneficiaries are wise to live in lower-tax areas. Forty-two percent of Lincoln firefighter paramedics live outside city limits, and 26% of police do. Cancer is considered a line-of-duty death in the fire department. Survivors receive benefits for life. Hopefully, survivors of the Public Works employee killed by a mower landing on top of him in 2010 also receive lifetime benefits for a line-of-duty death. His coworkers filed a grievance that they face retaliation if safety concerns are raised. In order to get more hits online, police department personnel committed libel and slander against an innocent woman and left the post up for two years. The court ordered me to pay the victim over $259,000. An innocent Lincoln couple sued the city in Lancaster County for $2.7 million following officials' home invasion robbery of their residence and seizure of their property, the result of an anonymous tip. That claim was denied, but I may be on the hook for a new one they filed against the Lincoln Lancaster Narcotics Task Force. A Lincoln fire and rescue captain has sued leadership and the city for alleged retaliation following his report of recruit harassment. A small construction company is suing the city for damages and final payment for a project they contend was delayed by the city and caused the company additional expenses. The mayor increased my LES city dividend tax and may increase the Black Hills Energy franchise fee to further increase my utility costs. Water and wastewater fees have increased 3.9% a year for the past 10 years. LES has denied electricity generation cost breakdowns requested by a private energy firm who claims ratepayers could save millions of dollars by opening up the market to competition. Beatrice recently did just that, switching energy providers from NPPD to American Energy Partners at an expected power cost savings of 15%. Ninety-five percent of city employees are tied to union contracts. Union success equates to increased pension benefits and restricted work rules. Why is the union allowed to control services for me that I pay for, yet I have no leverage? Some years ago, though fully insured, I experienced a $40,000 uninsured loss that eventually led me to file Chapter 13 bankruptcy. I gained a whole new perspective and a greater understanding. While I subsidized successful private businesses, the mayor's budget proposal suggested basic public services would have to be cut, or taxes would have to be raised. Stop giving my money to favored businesses. Improve and protect services to citizens. We don't have budget problems, we have bad government. I'm grateful four members of the city council came up with changes to the budget that would retain basic services to citizens and also not raise taxes. I support their proposed budget with the cuts and no tax increase.
Thank you.
Pat Anderson, I was trying to lower it. Pat Anderson, C. Fuentes, 1500 South 11th Street. And I will give you just the opposite story. My tax increase will be about $12, because I live in a modest house, 100, well over 100 years old. And I don't mind paying a tax increase because I believe quality of life is very important, and I'm willing to pay for it. We don't get, you know, we've had many accolades for, we're in the top 10, how many different categories? We don't get to be the happiest city without a good quality of life. But I want to, I'm here to say that when the quality of life issues, when those assets are cut in our city, then it's hardest on the low-income areas of town. And there's, we rank, while we're the happiest city, we also ranked 145 out of 190 on the physical health rankings. And our statistics from Prosper Lincoln show us that, you know, while much of Lincoln is doing very well, that is not true for all parts of Lincoln. We scored high on a number of significant economic development projects, but if we continue to not fund infrastructure adequately, this will ultimately affect the big investments we've already made. The Hay Market is over 100 years old, 120, 130... John, you can tell us.
You were there.
Not you were there, but you owned the property down there. The streets, the water mains are what really concern me. And my 100-year-old house will not be getting the water replacements as soon as, as a lot of construction that was between, what was it, 1948, I think, and 1972? Because those mains are breaking much more quickly than the 100-year-old. So my neighborhood's going to be on the waiting list a lot longer. And I, I hope it just doesn't all backfire and cave in. We really need, we need to stay on schedule. It's going to take so long to replace those mains, we're already so far behind. We have a lovely downtown, we've had accolades for that, but neighborhoods surrounding that downtown are struggling and have far too many vacant, dilapidated buildings lurching in their midst, just waiting to catch fire. Funding to address the problem properties needs to be increased from previous years. And maybe that would make more lots available for, to build in-town rather than expanding on the outskirts again, since we know that impact fees don't get raised and they're not paying for growth. Lincoln is also a good place to raise a family and to retire. We've had accolades for that. But we need adequate funding for city staffing, and that includes planning, urban development, parks. We've already seen from our 20 years of cutbacks to the Parks Department, how that has affected the parks' infrastructure, their buildings, the equipment. So they can no longer just maintain or fix something, now they have to do complete replacements. If you've looked at their 10-year plan, that used to be, I'm not sure if it's still online, it used to be. But they were looking at many more replacements rather than just fixing. It's too expensive to operate that way. And I think you've heard enough about the ashbor, so I won't, I won't be, I won't go on about that too much, except it does concern me that we have a lot of liability with 14,000 trees that are going to become brittle and break. And we've had, because of global warming now, we get 65 mile-an-hour winds that used to be unheard of. We get those several times a year now. And I'm always surprised there's not more city liability with our city trees because we, because we haven't kept up on the trimming of those trees. And we, every time there's a high wind, we see that, the results of that in the streets, so that's all I have. I'll gladly pay more taxes, thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next testifiers.
Up to testify is Marilyn Kruger, and then Krista Yokum.
My name is Marilyn Kruger, and my address is 2324 A Street, here in Lincoln. I'm here today on my own time. I am a city employee, I drive a bus for Startran, but I am in no way representing either the city or Startran. I do support the entire budget that the mayor proposed. I feel like that everything on that budget is critically important. But my area of expertise happens to be Startran. And so I want to say that I appreciate the fact that you didn't put that on the chopping block when you decided to make cuts. I think that you need to know that increasing public transportation is good for everyone, whether they use it or not. Every dollar that is spent on public transportation comes back as $4 in economic stimulus. Property values along bus routes can rise as much as 20% over areas that do not have access to bus routes. An increase of 3% in ridership can actually produce a noticeable decrease in congestion. So improving the Startran system will ultimately impact everyone in the city. It is not, it may seem self-serving for me to be here representing, you know, saying that I appreciate that you're going to fund extra bus service on Startran, but I have four years left, and I have enough seniority that as far as my job goes, it wouldn't, it won't affect me even if there were cuts made. But this is the first time in the 13 years that I've worked for Startran that the city has increased funding for Startran. And I think that's historic, and I think you should be proud that you worked together with the mayor and, you know, everyone came together. And even though we may have differences of opinions about certain things, this, this is the one thing you guys have sort of agreed on and understand that it is, it's necessary to attract businesses to the city and to get people working. If we can have later service, we can get people who have not been able to work in this city back to work. And they then become productive members of society rather than just taking what they can get from social services. So I want to just thank everybody for doing as much work. I believe that, that you're making a historic change to the attitude towards Startran and that this is a combination of the mayor's department, the city council, Startran staff, and possibly Citizens for Improved Transit. But it's visionary, and it is unprecedented in what I've seen in the 13 years I've worked for Startran. So I want to thank every one of you. And I'm making a big assumption here that you aren't going to cut the funding that you've, you know, discussed. But in any case, I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work in getting this done and to also encourage you to rethink making cuts. I'm willing to pay extra, I live here in town, I'm willing to pay whatever I have to pay to keep, you know, keep the services that we need. I don't have any ash trees in my yard, but I had to cut down poplar trees a few years ago, and that wasn't cheap either, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next testifier, please, come forward.
My name is Krista Yokum. My address is 330 Northwest 13th Street. I have come today, and I probably don't have much to add that you have not already heard, but I also, I wanted to reiterate that organizations, thank you, like NeighborWorks, who work so hard to keep our city core strong, are vital, and we need this, the city needs to do everything we can to continue to support those neighborhoods. The improvements that were proposed for the wastewater management needs to be kept on target and on schedule. Like June, I completed the city survey, and I like my city. I'm proud of my city. I was glad to have that opportunity to participate and feel now like my voice was not heard in that survey. To cut budgets will not allow our city to keep up with what we need to do. This minimal tax increase could possibly do that. As a taxpayer, a homeowner, a wife of a former first responder, and a grandmother who want my grandchildren to grow up in this city and avail themselves of all the opportunities they have here, I want city services retained, trees maintained for our environment and for the aesthetic that feeds our souls. We need the wastewater management infrastructure to support the vital neighborhoods in our core city. We've been down this path of cuts to things like the buses, pools, parks, libraries, over the last few years, all of which not, add not just to the quality of the city, but to the quality of life. And I'm glad that those things have been, for the most part, preserved here. But these proposed cuts in this budget also compromise the very reasons that most of us choose to live here in Lincoln. I do not support the budget cuts. I do support a minimal tax increase to maintain our wastewater management system, keep that improvement on schedule, and to maintain the quality of life here in Lincoln. Thank you.
John?
I'd just like to, Ms. Yokum, I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure.
You and several others have talked about budget cuts. And again, the dollar amount of taxes is going up regardless of, for example, the property tax increase. Property dollars, tax dollars, sales tax dollars, fees continue to go up. So what we're looking at, those of us who have suggested some fine tuning here, but I just want to emphasize, it's not cutting taxes, it's just taking it less of an increase.
Sure, I understand, and if I would have taken more time to write more clearly, I probably would have been able to convey that.
And I think that's just something that we often hear at all levels of government.
Sure, sure, but I do think the cuts that are proposed that would severely affect our quality of life, those, you know, not putting as much as what we need to into maintaining our trees and the wastewater management system, certainly.
Up next to testify is Mike Cross, and I'm also recalling Braden McLaughlin. And then anyone else who may have signed to speak before our upcoming break, please notify us so we can get you on the list.
Mike is not speaking. And so all of the people who have signed up to speak before the break are now done. So if anybody else wants to speak at this point, I think you've got a few more minutes left, but Mrs. Fox has signed up to speak after the break.
Okay. We did have someone who had signed up to speak before the break, was not available at the time that he was called, but is now present, so could you please call up Braden McLaughlin to have his testimony? And that may just be the last one that we can fit in before the 6:00 PM recess.
Hi, Braden McLaughlin, Bridgewater Consulting, 2041 South 18th Street. In all honesty, most of the comments, questions, concerns that I was going to speak about have pretty much already been addressed. So I will yield my five minutes in the intention of speeding everything up, so. If anybody has any questions.
We've heard a lot of perspectives, both, you know, for and against the council's proposals. Did you want to speak to which side you fall on, or?
I think, I think I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Right, is there anyone else who, are we done then with the people who've signed up to speak before 6:00 PM? Okay, if that's the case.
I move adjournment until 6:30.
Recession, recess.
Recession, so sorry.
Yes, we're just going to recess. I don't believe, do we need a vote on that?
No.
No, okay, all right, we are recessed till 6:30.